Good evening and welcome to the Town Council Chambers. It is Monday, February 12th. Please join us at the Town Council meeting for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Councillor O'Clair.
Present.
Councillor Carrasco.
Present.
Councillor Clements.
Present.
Councillor De Pietro.
Present.
Councillor Manna.
Present.
Councillor Morales.
Present.
Councillor Nash.
Present.
Councillor Steves.
Present.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is to consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of January 29th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, amendments, deletions?
I'll be abstaining.
Okay, one abstention. You noticed that we tried to move forward with our, with the process. We had, Maritza took minutes and she did an excellent job last time. Well, poor Max, who doesn't miss any really, had a personal, personal need to not be here. So we appreciate her doing that. There were a couple of changes. Councillor Nash sent in and there's redlined and then I did a, I just did a typo change. So just for the record that hopefully as we move forward, that process will work out well and we'll have good minutes at each night when we amend, when we approve them. Excuse me. Okay, all those in favor? All right. We have seven and one abstention. Agenda item number three, excuse me, number four, Subcommittee summaries, relevant minutes to be read at each agenda item. And the first one is for a general government.
And we had a meeting, I have not had a chance to type up the minutes. We had a meeting on the 5th with a bunch of agenda items, some of which are on our tonight's agenda, including numbers nine and 10. We also discussed, had an extensive presentation from Will Canoyer regarding 183 parcels that the town owns of various, various degrees of whether or not we should be trying to sell them or keep them or, most of them, most of them are small, a lot of them are landlocked, a lot of them are properties that maybe would be only of interest to the people immediately neighboring them. We did talk a little bit about some of the other possible uses of some of these properties. And I won't get into a huge, a lot of detail, it was fairly lengthy, but when I get the minutes typed up, you can still only take a look at them and get some idea from that. We also, let's see, we also talked about, as I mentioned, there's nine and 10, we're on the agenda. We also did a bit of discussion on whether or not to make some amendments to the snow shoveling bylaws. And we talked through some ideas around about that and we'll be coming back for more details and more research on that particular issue. And we also have a few items that are going to come up in future meetings for more detailed discussion. And that's it at the moment.
All right. Any meetings scheduled?
Not at the moment. Although there will be one coming up soon, but it's not scheduled yet.
All right. Item 4B is Department of Public Works. That's Councillor De Pietro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had no meetings since my last report, but we do have one scheduled for Tuesday, February 3rd at 7:00 PM.
13th tomorrow night.
13th.
Tomorrow night.
13th. My apologies.
If we could all gather another week, yes. And for the record, the location has changed to the Veterans Room. I believe we had that memo today from Yvonne, since the school committee will be meeting up here. So just wanted to point that out. You might not have gotten that memo. Okay. All right. 4C is Education and Human Services. That's Councillor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, no minutes to share since we are up to date with most of them. However, tomorrow night, February 13th, 6:00 PM, Veterans Room, I believe, is correct. So those agendas were reposted, I believe. Also, we have a date held for Thursday, February 22nd with agenda and time on that date to be determined. Nothing else to report. Thank you.
The next down is 4D, Planning and Development. And there was a meeting and I took the committee for Councillor O'Clair, who wasn't able to attend. I do have minutes. Apologize that they're not in. I know they were sent and we just don't have a copy and I'm not sure why, but they were done. So we met on February 5th at 6:30 and a number of the items are on the agenda. The Southbridge Graves Engineering Peer Review for the solar projects, the review of the zoning bylaw introducing the marijuana zoning establishments, also the agreement for a fees in order to assess commercial drive value. And I think that's pretty much it. So those items are on the agenda this evening. And there's nothing else scheduled at this point. I take it or go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I just wanted to thank you and everybody else who stepped up during my medical absence as well. So thank you for running that meeting and taking the minutes and, you know, making sure that our government moves forward.
Glad to see you back.
Thanks.
Agenda item 4E is Protections of Persons and Property. That's Councillor Manna.
I have no minutes to read and I have no meetings planned at this time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number five is Chairman's Announcements. I just have a few, just as I noted a little bit a few minutes ago, the school committee is having their meeting tomorrow night. It will be to introduce the new receiver and they have changed their location from the Veterans Room. They will be meeting up here in the, in the council chambers as usual. That's at 7:00 PM. Hopefully you can tune in and get to meet the receiver yourself or come on down and be in the audience. That would be a wonderful thing. I want to make note that I received word from Bay Path that they're going to have a public hearing on their school budget on March 5th at 6:30 PM in their school's committee boardroom. At some point therein, Bay Path always comes to Southbridge as well and presents the budget to us, usually at the EHS meetings during the budget process. But it is an open public hearing at Bay Path. I would like to address the citizen who came up and spoke in regard to alternate side parking. I did speak with the chief about that as he is part of the Traffic Commission and I thought I might know this answer because I know it's come up before. One of the reasons, the main reason that most communities, and if you actually Google "communities and alternate side parking," you will see thousands of municipalities, there's probably more than that, that do alternate side. And that's because if you're always on one side, they can't plow the other side. They can never clean the alternate side if everyone is always allowed to park on the one side. So that is the, the main reason most municipalities are only doing one side, alternate side, so that they have the opportunity to come in and do the night work. If you would like to, I mean, we can talk about this, you can come up at Citizens Forum and we can address it. I just wanted to report back that I did look into it and, and then I actually said I was doing some research on it online. I was curious and, and that was the result was wow, everybody from across the country in the snow areas seemed to be using alternate parking. And a lot of them are doing 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM. I'm not quite sure how people do their car movings between 11:00 or 1:00 and, you know, 6:00 or 7:00 AM. It was, we're, we're quite lenient, I guess, on the, the large scale, 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM, I believe we are. So that's all I've got to offer at this point. I'm sure if someone would like to speak to the Traffic Commission directly and have a longer explanation, they do have meetings, I believe it's once a month, you could get it. They're posted. So I had the chance to meet the receiver along with Council Vice Chair Steves last week and the town manager and some of the school committee members over at the high school. We had a very good conversation, very long conversation, couple of hours, voicing our concerns and the concerns that have been brought to us. My first impression of the new receiver was, was positive and I felt that while he didn't have all the answers, and I was really glad he didn't, I was very impressed that he didn't have all the answers, but he certainly appeared willing to stay the course and help Southbridge. So again, you'll get that chance to hear him, hopefully in his own words tomorrow evening if you tune in or come down to the meeting. I think that's it. That's all I have right now. So we'll move on. Town Manager's announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. A couple of things. First of all, I want to talk briefly about the Town Manager Substance Abuse Advisory Committee. The committee has been working very hard to develop a plan. As you know, we promised to submit a plan to you before we spent any of the money that was given for the purposes of trying to educate people about substance abuse and dealing with that issue. I want to note, and I know that people won't be able to see it, but there's a newsletter that was recently put out and you'll find this newsletter on the Town Hall Facebook page, you'll find this newsletter on the town's website, you'll find it at the library, you'll find it at the Town Hall. It's a very, very valuable document to those people who are in need of help. It really outlines very clearly all the Southbridge resources that someone would need if they had an addiction. And that's important because when developing this newsletter, I spent a great deal of time on, on different websites trying to find out information. And even I, who have no substance abuse problem, had a very difficult time finding Southbridge information. There was so much information on the websites that it was difficult to really find out what you were looking for. So this document makes it very, very easy, identifies the specific people who provide different types of services here in Southbridge. It also gives tips for, you know, looking and, for instance, making sure your medicine cabinet doesn't have drugs in it that your children or friends that come over your house might be able to get to. So I think it's really helpful. It also explains the missions of various different types of agencies within the town that provide these kinds of services. So I want to encourage anyone, if you have a friend, if you have a family member, if you know someone is struggling with addiction, get the resources, you need to help that person. I think it's, it's critical. As you know, the Town Council voted recently to join a lawsuit, an opioid lawsuit, to go against the manufacturers. And I think that was a great thing. That document is now signed and we are officially part of that process. It's interesting to see though, a recent news article that came out talking about one of the largest opioid manufacturers in the country is no longer, announced that they're no longer going to be marketing this product to the doctors in the same aggressive way they used to. And that's a result of lawsuits that are going against these major pharmaceutical companies. So there's action already occurring that might help to fight this, this plague, I guess I would describe it as. So it's nice to see already the pharmaceuticals getting a little bit nervous, starting to be more responsible with these drugs and making sure that they are dealt with in a way that protects lives instead of destroying lives. So I thought that was really, really good. Like the Town Chairwoman and the Vice Chairman, I had an opportunity to meet the new receiver. I was really pleased with the comments that he made and I had an opportunity to meet with him a little earlier to talk about budget issues and, you know, day-to-day activities and found him to be very responsive, very understanding, having a concept of looking at the long-term, which is what we need here. There's been too much turnover. And while I am one of those people who have dealt directly with the various school receivers that we've had, I have seen great progress in a number of areas within our school system. And I read in a paper that some people have different opinions and they feel like things are worse than when the receiver come. I do not believe that at all. I believe our school system is making good progress, our principals are doing a great job, our teachers are doing a great job. And I see the system moving slowly forward. I do want to say it's going to take time. I think it's not something we're going to be able to fix overnight, but we are on a good path. And I think that with this new receiver who has experience in towns like Southbridge, matter of fact, cities even larger than Southbridge like Meriden, Connecticut, was a, you know, almost three times the size of this community, but has the same kind of identity. It has a lot of multifamily housing, a lot of diversity, a lot of poverty. I like the fact that he has that kind of experience coming in in a large city. So I think he's going to be a true asset to this community and look forward to working with him. That is all I have tonight, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you very much. Okay. Number seven is swearing in and presentations, and we do not have any this evening. Agenda number eight, Citizens Forum. So if there's anyone who'd like to come up and speak to anything that's not on the agenda, you can come now and get your five minutes. If there's anyone who would like to speak to anything not on the agenda, if it's on the agenda, you can speak to it at that time. I am not seeing anyone. We will move on. Agenda number, agenda item number nine, vote to accept a property located on 133 West Street, parcel number 049-136-0001, and hereby authorize the town manager to execute an acceptance and said property on behalf of the council.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Councillor Steves.
That was one of our agenda items for the last Gen Gov meeting, so Ms. Fornier pointed out that a person from out of state had bought the property online, sight unseen. He thought he was buying a house, but he only found out after the fact that it's now a vacant lot because we demolished the house. He was getting tickets for not shoveling it and so he contacted the Town Hall and didn't, didn't think he could do anything about it. But if he walked, if he walks away, we get nothing, she was thinking, and they owe about $35,000 in back, in back taxes and, oh, sorry, that's from the demolition lien, that's why they owe 35 grand, and back taxes. But this person is willing to sign a deed in lieu of foreclosure that would essentially just give us the property outright. And she was figuring it made more sense to do it that way instead of chase him for the back taxes and the lien. And it would cost thousands of dollars to, to do the court filing, all of those stuff. So that was her recommendation and we voted four to zero to do so.
I recommend that the council do so.
Anyone have anything else to add or any questions? Councillor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think just to clarify one little piece of that, this is the property that is at the corner of West and School Street.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
All those in favor? Two hands. Eight motion carries. Agenda item number 10, vote to accept the park grant and Parkland acquisitions and renovations for Communities Program Project Agreement in the amount of $234,972.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Councillor Steves.
I have, that was on our agenda as well. And a lot of the discussion actually was, was pretty similar to previous discussions we've had about it. However, some of the, so I'll point out the, the key differences. Among other things, the town manager mentioned that all of the, the details with Chip will be verbal until the closing and after the 21E is done. Let's see. You were concerned and Mr. Catrona was concerned about having nothing on paper. And Joe specifically wanted, said he wanted a letter of intent from Chip stating the intention to, to sell the property for a buck and a few of the other things that we've talked about. I asked questions about whether or not the state had the language for both of the votes and Ryan said that they did. That, let's see, where there was some concern about whether or not he was just, whether Chip's doing, just doing a phase one of the 21E or whether it was in fact doing actual boring and testing and sampling. And the, it's apparently it's just phase one. He clarified by sending email to all of us that indicated what the details of a phase one 21E actually are. The documents originally said that the, that possibly doing extra testing could be an option, which apparently is not being done at this point. It might be done later. And let's see, there was some, some debate over some specifics in the texting about changing the address from the, from the Community Center to the Town Hall in one of the, one of the documents that's related to it. And we ended up, we ended up voting to send it up. And that's where it is.
Councillor De Pietro, did you hear that?
I did, Madam Chair. Thank you. My opinion remains unchanged regarding this issue. I've received responses from citizens on both sides of the aisle on, on this park. And I still believe that presently it's fiscally irresponsible to put this money in this direction right now. Again, as I stated before, we can't repair the roads to get to the park. In the future, it's, in the near future, it's not looking any better that we're going to have the funds to put towards what I think are more, I wouldn't use the word important, but more, more responsible and need to issues for the town. I still cannot support this and, and I will not be supporting it on this vote. Thank you.
Councillor O'Clair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. You know, I've pretty much talked this to death, but I will, I will add that as councillors, we need to be focused more than just on short-term goals. We need to be focused more or less on repairing a quarter of a mile of road, which is about what $100,000 would get us, and be focused more on the medium and long-term goals that have been set out for us through paid professionals in plans that we have spent, you know, in excess of $100,000 for. I think that for too long, we've been shortsighted. I think that, you know, kicking the can down the road for these medium and long-term goals in, in favor of these shorter-term patchwork Band-Aid fixes is a lot of why we're in the position that we're in. I think that infrastructure is a huge problem in Southbridge. I think that $100,000 is literally a drop in the bucket for the amount of work that we need. So with that being said, tonight, this is to accept the grant money. This is not to finalize the purchase and sales. This is not to go over, you know, any kind of environmental test results. All of those can still be, you know, those can still be completed and those still can still be negotiated outside of tonight. So for tonight, I hope that as councillors, we're looking towards the future and long-term success for Southbridge rather than patchwork fixes that we've been so accustomed to doing throughout all these years. Thank you.
Any others? Councillor Nash?
Thank you, Madam, excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I agree with Councillor O'Clair on the matter, but what's more, just to reiterate to the public, we had two separate general government subcommittee meetings just on the issue of accepting the grant alone. Much has been said on everything surrounding the whole project, the property acquisition, purchase and sale potentially, but at the end of the day, I still support this and I think that the public just needs to realize that although there are two very distinct sides to this, we can remain passionate, we can sit up here and be polite and respectful unlike the way that at least for myself, I presented during general government when I got up and left. I'd like to think that we do have a little bit of a vision to the future. Maybe I'm wrong. I guess we'll find out. Thanks.
Any other councillors? Councillor? Us Steves?
No problem. Thank you, Madam Chair. I got some, I got some calls on this in the last couple of days, two in fact, one shortly before the meeting. And I'm still concerned about some of the, many of the same things that I've expressed concerns about over countless weeks, it seems. It seems like this is going on forever. And I am really concerned about the fact that we still do not have clarity on whether we're going to be needing to test for contamination or not. I understand the process that you sent on that, that email that you sent about how the 21E process works. I get that. And I understand that it's governed by federal law. But I'm, it seems to me, to me, to be really premature to be accepting funds to do a project until, if, before we even know whether it makes sense to do the project. And that's why I would like to move to postpone this vote until we get the 21E back and see what it actually says.
Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. Just to address that specific question, it's, because it's an important one. The grant in theory was supposed to be accepted by January 31st. And, and, you know, she is, obviously the grant writer is giving us a little extra time. I tried to call her today because I was curious as to, you know, I knew you were going to bring up this issue, so I called the grant writer. It happens to be she's on vacation till the 20th of the month, so I couldn't get the answer, to be honest with you, Councillor Steves. I, I don't think we should risk the grant. We, we've talked about this numerous times. I want to be really specific. What we're doing tonight is accepting the grant, period. The state recognizes and understands clearly that if there's any contamination whatsoever on the land, that we are not willing to purchase the land, that we obviously can't spend money because the money's going to be spent after we accept the land. So the state understands this process, they've okayed this process. As a matter of fact, on, at the December 20th meeting, the state had given us language that we had to vote on. And the intention of that, and I said it really clearly that night, the intention of that is, the state is basically asking us, if we give you this money, are you going to go forward, assuming the land is clean? And it was a five to, I think, five to one vote with two abstentions that night. But that was our time to say, I think that was the time to say, we're not going to go forward with this. I think for now, we should vote to accept the grant. The grant's not going to be spent, it's a reimbursement grant. You don't get any money back until after you spend it. Let the 21E study be done. We obviously have now asked the property owner at his own expense to pay for a 21E, so he's investing his own money to do that. Once we have the 21E, that's going to be a separate vote. And during that separate vote, that is the time where we need to make a decision if we want to buy this land, if there's any contamination or not. In reference to the issue of contamination, as we talked about and you stated, a 21E essentially looks at all historical aspects of the land to see if there's any reason at all to believe that more further testing should be done. And then if that's the case, where that testing should be. So a big part of the 21E is to identify if testing has to be done and where it should be. So they wouldn't just start testing now because they wouldn't know where, first of all. So the recognized federal process is to do the 21E and then once you get that evaluation back, there's going to be a decision made, either the 21E comes back clean and there's no indication or no history or any reason to believe that the land is contaminated, or it's going to come back to say, hey, you know, based upon all the DEP records we have, all the past records, they're looking at the land, that there is a reason to continue testing further and that that would then require a phase two. If that is the case, we may choose, or you may choose as a board, not to move forward at that time. That's a separate individual vote that you guys will have to make. I, I think for right now, that's a separate issue from tonight. Tonight really is, if the land comes back clean, if everything seems to be okay environmentally, are we going to accept the grant? That's really what tonight is. And that's what the state is expecting. I, I will say this, spent a lot of time talking with that grant writer and, and based upon the last vote, if we had voted no on, if you had voted no on December 20th, I would have said, let's just stop this process. But you didn't. The vote came through in this Town Council, voted to support moving forward. Nothing has changed since that vote, except the fact that we got the grant. I mean, it was kind of good news is all we've gotten, so it seems to me that this process should carry forward until we get to the next vote. We don't like the 21E, we can vote this down and stop this whole process. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councillor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I begin, there was no second to Councillor Steves' motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I won't be seconding this. I would like to just reiterate, as Councillor Steves indicated when he read the minutes, this came up from general government with a three to one favorable recommendation to council, with Mr. Catrona, I think, is the only objection, if you will. And I think this needs to get done now. End of the day, this is just to accept the grant, which is pretty substantial, of course. But there's no need to drag this out any further. I want this done tonight. I don't want to have this motion seconded and I won't second it. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Morales.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I would just like to state that I hope that whatever decision we, we have with the, with this park, with this agenda item, that, that us councillors can move on and worry about our, our local business. My guess, what I'm trying to say is that we just have to agree to disagree. We don't get elected to always be on the same boat. You know, I, I think that we represent different citizens in our community and I just hope that we can continue to just work together. I, our, this is, the year's almost over, so, and I think we just have to move at a faster pace and, and get our, our business done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. So I'm going to make a few comments myself. First off, the, there's a couple of things. I don't believe it's just a vote to accept the, the grant. I mean, certainly it, it puts us right where we've always been. For me, it's not been about the 21E, it's not been about the contamination. I know for a lot of people it has been. And I want to point out that while phase one is federal regulation, state regulation, all that good stuff, a full, a full environmental study is phase one and phase two. And a buyer or a seller and all, they can determine that they want a full 21E. Yes, there is no need usually to go forward and spend the extra money if a phase one comes back clean. But you can request during your property exchange, not that, I'm sure Mr. Norton would want to pay for the entire study, a, a full phase one and phase two 21E. And I just want to make sure that's clear because I know that Councillor Steves made it clear in a number of emails, but also in his conversations at Subcommittee and up here, that he was expecting that we would be testing soil, we would be doing that type of testing, which falls under phase two. Phase Two. There was a lot of 21E thrown around, and I felt that to be a bit, hate to use that word that used to be used a lot, disingenuous on things, because, well, confusing for those who don't know what it is. So as far as that goes, for me, it's all about the money. It's all about this community. And while I know I don't want to be short-sighted, as Counselor Claire said, we need to look at the future, when, I am looking at the future. Because education-wise in this community, we have a lot on the plate. The Bay Path, they're doing their budget. I believe, if I read that really quickly well, our assessment's going up with them another $40,000 or thereabouts. So that's just Bay Path. But we have our own community, our own infrastructure in terms of education to take care of. So yes, roads, you don't get much at $100,000, although if you do some grinding and resurfacing, you get a lot more than a quarter mile. But it's all about the fiscal responsibility. Do we want another town park? Absolutely. That would be great, right? Why not? But we also have lots of town parks. And as one citizen, who I believe wrote to all of us, but I won't read the email, certainly hand it to anybody who wants it, a local businessman wrote to us and said that he was more concerned about the fiscalness in terms of where the $100,000 can go. That's not the only person. As others have said, people have reached out to all of us, I'm sure. And while many of them don't like to come to council meetings because they don't like to be put on the spot, I'm looking at this from all the people that we all represent. And it hasn't changed for me. This particular project is not, is just, in my opinion, from me, is not in the best interest of our community, not especially at this time. I believe it is in the interest of one, but I don't believe it's in the interest of all. So that, again, just my opinion, everyone has their own. I feel compelled to speak up because it is not just about a 21E environmental study for me. It's about money. It's about the taxpayers and the future of our community in a lot of ways. And that's, I haven't, haven't wavered on that, and I won't waiver on that. I just, I feel that it wasn't, this entire project just did not flow the right way. And I would, I would also like to comment that we need to, people need to be aware of our charter. And our charter is pretty specific. And you could have let the state know, our charter is pretty specific, that we as councilors have to accept all grants before, during, after, whatever. And so to indicate that one vote versus another, this is the vote to accept the grant. So it is significant. It is important. And it's part of our charter. And the town manager and others should understand that. There's a lot of parts to our charter, acquisitions and various things are part of that, that we are, that we are governed to, to have some oversight on. So, okay. I'm going to go with Counsel Manneff first, because Counselor Claire's spoken once, and you haven't spoken yet. So, and then I'll go to Counsel O'Clare.
I just want to thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to state that I was not at that general government meeting. I could not attend. But I would not have supported it. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel O'Clare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, you know, you're not the first, or this is actually in response to something that you've said, and it wasn't the first time that I've heard that the $100,000 should go towards the schools, or that Bay Path has a $40,000 deficit that we're going to have to make up. Those kind of thought processes are what got us into the problem of having to remove almost $300, or $3 million from our operating budget because of one-time expenses utilized for ongoing, or one-time revenue utilized for ongoing expenses. You throw $100,000 into the school system this year, and then you have $100,000 shortfall next year. You understand this, right?
Yes. And since you ask, I'm not saying that we need to keep giving more money to the schools on a, what I'm saying is expenses are getting more regardless.
This is not a recurring revenue. This is a money that has been appropriated and sitting in an account somewhere that needs to go towards a capital items, or a capital budget item.
You're right. And we have a fire station study going on, Counselor O'Clare, and we have a dog shelter that needs to be built. And we have a lot of other things in this community. So I'm just saying, there's better money spent than the green grass on the side of the river and paying for somebody else's decrepit fence to come down. That's all.
It is $100,000 that you're turning into $350,000 to redevelop and beautify a very significant and very popular portion of town. That provides intrinsic value. That provides value to the business owners in this community. There are countless events that can be held down there that go towards long-term gain. We need to, again, stop Band-Aid fixing things. $100,000 isn't going to fix the school system. $100,000 isn't going to do any of these things that, you know, we're thinking. Instead, we're taking the $100,000, making it $350,000, and building something that's a positive asset for the community. And I apologize for going off on that tangent, but we need to stop talking about putting capital budget money into ongoing expenses. Because that is why this town was in such dire financial straits, and that's why we still are. Because we overspend on money that should have never been put in the budget. And as for tonight, this is for the grant. We can go forward. We can talk about environmental studies. If, you know, certain councilors want to have soil testing done later on in the process, those will all be negotiated with the purchase and sale agreement. This is to accept the grant that the state of Massachusetts was so nice to award us with. It is not, it is not locking us in in any way, shape, or form into this project. We still have time to vet it. We still have time to make sure that we're making the right choice for the community. Tonight, if you vote no, then you're killing the project because you're saying no to the grant money without even taking a single step forward to appropriately, you know, do our due diligence for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Clare. And I do respect your passion. And I take no offense to our exchange. I hope you don't either. We can agree to disagree. Okay, Counselor Carrasco.
Yes. I just, just want to touch one point that Counselor and our Chairman Clement said in regards to this project being the interest of one. I think this project is the interest of many. We had a room full of individuals that came out on a weekday meeting to speak their mind and to talk about this issue. So this being an interest of one person on this dais, whether it's a counselor or a town manager or a department head, however we want to look at it, I think that's an incorrect statement. I think one of the things that we are missing also is that, for many years, and I would agree with Counselor DePietro, Counselor DePietro since day one has been faithful to what he said in regards to not spending another dollar in regards to reports, in another, another study, another thing. And he's been true to that. And he's kept, he's been on point with that. And I would agree with him. Because for so many years, we've spent plans and economic development plans and master plans and all these different reports for years. And if you go down to the Economic Development Office, you will see shelves and shelves and shelves of reports, of plans, that were spent by this council with town money, with grants, with free cash, with all types of revenue. And for one of these reports, which is one of the ones that we hired our town manager to do, that was one of the questions that the sitting council, that was one of, I remember, I was the chairman of the Town Manager Search Committee. And that was one of the first questions that that group of citizens, there was three citizens from three different aspects of the business world of Southbridge that were part of that committee. And one of the first questions that we asked, all eight, I believe it was maybe 12 candidates that we interviewed, it was all, what are you going to do about the master plan? Is this going to be another document that's going to sit on our shelves and just collect dust? Or are you going to come in here and work to start to work and get some of these things and goals off that plan in which we spent money on? When, when a lot of us councilors were campaigning and asking people, we said, we want to see things done on the master plan. We want things accomplished. Well, for the last three weeks, excuse me, last three meetings, we've had individuals, we had presentation, we just had a presentation in regards to zoning. And we keep hearing this echoing concept of revitalizing the river, using the river. And I just, the master plan says it, the economic development plan says it, now our zoning plan is going to say it. I just, again, I know that people have different opinions in regards to reclaiming and repurposing the river. But I don't see no other place in town that can be used to repurpose that river. I mean, some have said, oh, we can go behind Dexter Russell. That, that's a great location. Not really. It's out of town. Some have said, let's use West Street. Well, West Street doesn't have the visibility that we need for safety. I mean, this parcel of land, and again, and I, for the record, I want this to be said, and I want people to understand, I am not for this project if there's a 0.01% of contamination. I don't want that. I don't want it. I will not support this project if there's contamination on that land. I'll be the first one to make the motion to throw this out the window. But tonight, it's not about that. Tonight, it's about us sending the message to the state, thank you for putting our name on the board. I said it last time. We put our name on the board. We just so happen to accept the grant. Receive the grant. Be selected. Excuse me. So I just, I think this is not the interest of one. This is the interest of many through many years, many, many years. And the master plan says it, the economic development plan says it. I just, again, again, we accept the grant. We go with the Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four. How many phases we have to do to get people to see? Because if there's discrepancy, then guess what? We don't have to move forward this project. Then we can take that $100,000 and let's do something in regards to cleaning up our streets. There's, we, there's tons of drugs. Because we decide to spend $150,000 to knock down one building, just one building. We spent $150,000 to knock down one building. But we're going to take $100,000 and not turn it over for years to come. So I just, again, I would also agree with Counselor O'Clare in regards to, this is something about seeing long-term due to the fact that for so many years, we've, our budget has been a little out of balance in regards to how we have balanced our budget. For many years, we were using free cash to balance operating expense. For many years, we were using Casella money to keep us afloat. I know we don't have Casella money now. But can you tell me what you just whispered?
I didn't. I just sighed. Excuse me. Are you finished? Because we're...
No, I just, I was just trying...
I didn't whisper?
Oh, okay. I'll review the tape. It's just, it's just one of those things that I just think that, again, I, I understand what's at hand, but we, I hope we do the right thing for the community and we send the state the right message that we're not going to turn down free money. That's all I got.
Okay. Counsel Steves.
Actually, I just wanted to bounce off of what Counsel Carrasco said a second ago about, you mentioned West Street Park down there. And one of the callers that I talked to earlier today was commenting on the fact that, that the trails down at West Street need some, need some maintenance. And that, you know, I was just thinking about it. I didn't think of this at the time. It actually came, came to my mind when, when you were talking there, Counsel Carrasco, is the fact that, what if we were to take some of this money and actually invest it into putting some of the same kinds of things that we're talking about putting down on the riverfront down at West Street, fixing the trails down there. It's already got riverfront access. It's already ours. We know it's clean. It's already popular. And we can see about putting some sort of a, like a gazebo-like setup up there where, when they're not using it for sports and things like that, use it for concerts and things like that. It's already got parking. It's already got easy access to the West Street School parking lots. It's, it's already ours. And honestly, this, this just occurred to me. It's part of the discussion, so I thought I'd mention it.
Thank you. Counsel O'Clare.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, this is just to Counsel Steves' point. I think that's a great idea. The problem with those lower fields is drainage. My daughter used to play soccer, and, you know, they're unusable for most months out of the year. And the repairs to those lower fields would probably, you know, eat up most of the $100,000 just to repair those fields. And I think that it's a great idea. Maybe we can look towards, you know, that project is something else down the future. But that doesn't take our, you know, $100,000 and turn it into $350,000. So I'm not saying that that's, you know, a project that shouldn't be looked at. You know, somebody earlier today, you know, explained, you know, maybe we should look at, you know, the common and taking down some of those trees and things of that nature. This isn't either or. You know, this isn't an either-or situation. This is a situation where we have an opportunity that has presented itself in a very specific way, based on direction that we've given to the town manager. And we have in front of us the opportunity to complete this goal as we've outlined and as we've been working towards for the past couple of years now. So I think that that is a great idea. And I think that, you know, at some point, we should, we should look into that. I know that as far as downtown access goes, the, you know, Daphne Politis, she spoke about it at the podium about a month ago, about the, you know, the intrinsic value of adding downtown river access to your town. And that is something that's in the master plan. In the master plan, it doesn't say, you know, revitalize the trails behind West Street or anything of that nature. We need, we need a lot of answers, and there are hundreds of projects that we can talk about doing in the future. But this specific one that we've spent this much time on is before us tonight to receive the grant for it. So, you know, I think that brainstorming back and forth with, you know, we could do this, or we could do that, really not on the table right now, unless you're willing to give up that $250,000 or $234,000 and settle for a project that only, that we can only put $100,000 towards as a Band-Aid. You know, that's, I don't think that that would be a responsible decision on our part at this time. Thank you.
Also, Counsel Steves.
Actually, what I was thinking of was the idea of simply reapplying for the same park grant, but putting it at West Street.
But you keep...
Why not? Granted, yes, that means we wouldn't be doing it right now. We'd probably be doing it next year. But then we would have, we would know the property is clean. We, I believe they did do some drainage work on it a couple of years ago. Because I know, I know they did, they put state money into those parks to put in that, that kid playground down there a couple of years ago. I thought they did drainage work at the time, too. I could be wrong. But it's already ours. So in the long run, it'd be a lot cheaper and a lot better for the community to maintain what we already have and make it better. And, I mean, I think, given the fact it's also access to Westville, with the trails running down to the dam and up and over the dam, we could tie into stuff that's already down there. That's what I was thinking.
Counsel Carrasco.
Yes. In regards to Counselor Steves' point in regards to drainage, for the last four years consecutive, the Southbridge Soccer Association, U-12 boys and up, that big field, they can't use it. They, they're using the high school field because of the drainage issues from April to almost June because of the snow and whatnot. So they still have a lot of issues in regards to drainage. Because the youth is still using the high school field. And for many years, I understand that parking is a nightmare also down there. When, when you fill that parking lot, you got people parking, I take a picture going down there when there's soccer season, you have people parking all the way down that, that hill. It's not a safe place. And, and again, we're missing the point of what we've paid professionals to do in regards to this whole master plan. It didn't talk about doing something behind the scenes. It did not talk about doing something with the trails. And I agree that trails are important, and people should be using them, and we should be doing something with it. But the master plan spoke about doing something with our downtown. And this is exactly what we would be following and doing. I just, again, I see where this is going. So I just hope we're doing the right thing.
Okay. Counsel, Counsel O'Clare, did you have more to say?
I had something, Madam Chair, through you. I had something really quick, just to respond to Counselor Steves. As far as, you know, saying no to this grant... Um, as far as, you know, saying no to this grant, but trying to find another grant that may or may not exist for, for fixing a, for fixing a trail. Um, obviously, the work's already been done to go into this. I don't, if we go through this without any knowledge of contamination, anything that's going to, you know, make the state look at this project and say, okay, you know, I, I understand this isn't a viable project because of contamination or because of, you know, X, Y, or Z, whatever might come down the pike. But if we just say no to something that we've fought for, that we've been awarded, I think that the chances of us getting a grant the next time around are going to be absolutely zero, um, for a project such as this. Um, so it, it isn't, you know, again, this isn't an either or instance. This is accepting something that we've worked towards. And then later, you know, down the line, we can talk about as many projects as you want, you know? Um, I'll sit with you and talk to you all day and brainstorm different things we could do around town to make the town better. Um, but, you know, this is very specific to a project that we've been working on for, you know, almost two years now. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair, through you. My mind hasn't changed, and I appreciate the good discussion tonight. But I think that one thing before we subsequently get to a vote that we didn't do the last three times we've talked about this, is thank all those good citizens that showed up for all of those different meetings that went into the master plan, economic development plan, urban renewal, and spent their time and energies like I'm sure some of us up here have done. Their input has been valuable. Please don't be dissuaded or give up on the things that you believe in when it comes to doing good in this community. I'm sure that there are members of this council up here that will bring fresh ideas to move Southbridge forward somehow, sometime, if we can't get this one done. Thank you.
Also, Counselor?
That's it.
Okay. Just want to point out the number of the people that have approached me business-wise and all have served on some of those and still do. So I'm, I, again, I think it's a, either you agree or you don't agree. That's just what this project is. Anybody else? Okay?
We have some citizen.
Well, they need to approach the podium. If you'd like to speak, come on up. State your name and your address. You need three minutes.
Demetrius Casperson, 51 North Street. Um, I'm here to bring up a couple of points. Number one, I came a few weeks back on the same issue. Um, a lot of the people that were here that night are people I knew. Many of them would be here again this evening, but they're attending an event. And, um, and honestly, I don't think anyone foresaw that the town considering not accepting a free two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'd also like to remind you all that you have a mandate that, that the master plan process that this town went through, which this town has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on, counting the, the amount of money that have been, that has gone out to our professional employees, um, was very, very clear. And it was a long-term study that, that took place over meeting after meeting. And in the conclusion, it was identified that this particular parcel, this particular part of the river was ideal for a park. Um, it's, it's very disconcerting to me to hear, um, counselors like Mr. Steves, um, who I think now at two meetings has suggested that he came up with an idea this morning. And he's placing the idea that he comes up with this morning up against years of research, experts who are not looking at just what's good for citizens in terms of recreational activity, but the economy of the, the town. These are experts that came from Boston, that have turned towns around. And you're putting fly-by-night brainstorming up against that. And that's really, really disconcerting, Mr. Steves. Um, I'd also like to mention that through my conversations with other business owners in this town, I don't think that you not taking this free two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to kill this project. I think that this park is popular enough that you're going to have a groundswell of people interested in pursuing it. So what you're going to be doing tonight by not accepting it is costing the town another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I think you really need to think about that because I think this is something that could go onto a ballot, um, by the citizens and the business community of this town. And the issue could be forced on you to start following expert advice and stop second-guessing experts. These people that are here from the Economic Development Office, we have a superb recreation director, a town manager that is doing his best to try to follow a plan, a mandate, that we spent years and lots of money on. And this park is a no-brainer. This is a component of that plan. And you're basically, all you're doing tonight is voting on whether you want a free two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. If you say no to that, you're saying no to free money for the community. Thank you.
Uh, Mike Marquetti, 120 Maria Avenue. I don't know what happened. Last time I came to this meeting, I thought that, I thought it was a done deal. I didn't realize that somebody had changed their mind. Something happened along the way. I know that some of the counselors have been mentioning, you know, the capital, the money that you need for other projects. And I agree. You voted on a capital improvement plan, uh, budget this last year, and you spent a lot of money on, uh, a lot of things. I was wondering why we were spending all the money on, on all these different things, but you counselors all voted for it. Uh, you voted, like, uh, Counselor Carrasco said, a hundred and fifty thousand to take down a house. You, uh, replaced a dump truck, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. You spent fifty thousand dollars on the firehouse feasibility study, even though there was already a feasibility study done a few years ago. I know that things are different now, but I think you could have probably used that same study and just updated the cost. Because I think that's probably the only difference is the cost. Three hundred thousand dollar, uh, money for the school for Chromebooks and technology, the brand-new high school, and we had to pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for technology. This is a brand-new high school. I don't know why we, they needed technology. I thought it was all included. Uh, the one that was, I found interesting was a hundred thousand dollars to replace the windows at the town hall. Uh, that's seemed kind of high, but.
We didn't actually do that, Mr. Marquetti.
Oh, well, okay. It was in the budget.
I'm just going to correct you on that.
All right. Thank you.
Because I told them that it was a star building.
I stand corrected.
And they looked into it.
But anyways, I don't really want to keep beating that down. I just wanted to say that, you know, if the problem is the hundred thousand, why don't you just take the hundred thousand out of the, the project and we'll find some other way to, 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 uh, get that money. You're putting, from what I'm reading, you're using two hundred and thirty-four thousand. I would, maybe I'm being naive, but I would think that that would, um, make the state okay with this grant. If we're using our own two hundred and thirty-four thousand, the only thing you'd be taking out is that hundred thousand that Mr. Counselor DePietro has a problem with. So why don't you just take that hundred thousand out? If that, if he would agree to that, take that hundred thousand out and we'll find some other way to, to, uh, maybe through grants or something, we'll find another grant to fund it. Like I said, maybe I'm just being naive. But if that's his only sticking point, I say take the hundred thousand out and get this project rolling. That's all. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor.
Um, just to clarify to that, the hundred thousand is the state-required match from our side. That's all it is. We have, we, the state requires us to put funds into it.
Well, you are putting funds. You're putting two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars into it.
No, that's, that's reimbursement money. That would, that would be, ultimately be state funds.
Right.
Although we have, we have to pay it first.
In order to get the funds, we have to use two hundred and thirty-four thousand of town funds, correct?
We actually have to use three hundred and thirty-four thousand.
All right.
Plus, plus the in-kind donations and numerous other.
Yeah.
And because of what they're requiring. So it's really more than a hundred thousand in, in costs.
Okay.
In the end. Just saying.
Get, you got to get creative, Mr. Town Manager.
Okay. Any other citizens?
Hello. Tia Parity, 757 South Street. Um, I just ask that, as a taxpayer of Southbridge, um, that the council accept tonight's vote to approve the grant and move forward contingent upon, um, the contamination studies that come back. I think it would be great to accept it and then see what happens from there.
Okay. Is there any other citizens who would like to say something? No?
Robert Clements, 128 Country Club Place. One of the owners of High Tools Incorporated, High Group Inc. This project has a lot of ifs for the town. Future ifs. If this park works, if everything works. In the end, we're talking about less than half an acre of usable land that we could do something with. We have more property on the common than this property will have for the town on the water. Most of it is waterfront edge that is unusable property against a highway and against a railroad that was built in the middle eighteen hundreds where product was removed from the railway and moved down to AO. There are no records of what happened or what may have been contaminated along that roadway and that railway from those eras. I can say that for a fact. People just took care of things back then. Okay? A railcar would roll over. Contaminants would roll out and they'd just clean it up. There was never records, there's nothing in the papers, there's nothing in your historical records that a 501(c)1, 501(c)(3), excuse me, uh, 21e Chapter 1 is going to, um, register. So therefore, if they look at the historical records and say, well, we need to move to a 2 because there was something that happened, it's not going to be there. It didn't happen. Because back in those days, they just took care of everything. Everybody just pulled together and made it clean up. The value to the town of a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar park for 1.2 acres, usable property of that is less than a half an acre, is not a great value. My home on 10 acres of land cost me that money. Now, it was a long time ago, back in 1990, but we're talking about the same kind of money just for flat property. Nothing there. Okay? There's trees, there's contaminants, there's stuff that will not be removed. We still have to deal with, um, a lot of different things to make that property valuable. And I don't think it's going to cost the town a hundred thousand dollars. Yes. Uh, the in-kind donation is going to be a lot more.
Your time is up.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'd, I'd say vote no on this, please.
Your time is up. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else?
I'm, I'm wondering if I could just add one small thing.
We'll give you a minute if you keep it respectful.
Sure. I, I don't know, I don't know how much research has already been done on this, but, um, I have a copy of a Phase 2, um, study that was done of the entire riverbank of this community that was done, and I think around 2004, that I have in PDF form and I can supply to all of you. It was mandated by the state, I think through the DEP, that the entire Quinabog, um, in the Blackstone area had to be, um, you know, had to be, uh, undergo that comprehensive study. And I, you know, it's about this thick. I have a copy of it. And, uh, you know, and beyond that, that led to some remediation that did happen on the river. I think Mr. Steves mentioned this a few weeks ago, that there was, there was a cleanup that was done further down the river that was a result of that study. So that's all.
Thank you. I think we beat the 21e to death. I'm just going to interject and say that it's, there's way more than environmental here. There's a lot of other issues that this town will have, liability-wise, ownership-wise, money-wise, has been the point on my, on this. So we keep beating the environmental, too, but there's a lot more. Patrol-wise, financially, from our resources, there's just a lot. And that's where I'm staying with my side of it. So, okay, Rosemary, come on on. Uh, Rosemary Scrivens, second.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Scrivens, the Director for Economic Development and Planning. I just have a concern, and I, I just want, um, wanted to state my concern tonight. Based on my experience as the Regional Director for the Massachusetts Office of Business Development, I had the opportunity to work, um, with a number of other state agencies reviewing, um, very competitive grants from communities. And, um, it may not be an official thing that ever comes out, but when this, um, application was put into motion about a year and a half ago with the town council setting aside the hundred thousand dollars, um, and then the whole application being, um, put together and then submitted, that was kind of a commitment on the community's part that you were, that you wanted to pursue this. People work very hard at the state level to review competitive grants, and they don't take awarding communities lightly. So my concern here is something I wanted to echo, um, that Town Counselor O'Clair said. If you turn this back, um, for the reasons that people are bringing up now, um, without finding out if the land is contaminated, I'm concerned that you, it would be very difficult to get another grant, at least from this particular department. So, so that's, I just, I care a lot about this community and, and that's just, I just wanted to express that. Thank you.
Ms. Scrivens, I wanted to respond to that because I was one of the counselors who voted to put money aside for a potential park. And there was no way, shape, or form that when we voted, we knew that this was the grant we were going for. And I asked Mr. Rowenfeld about specifically when the process started, and it was this year, this late spring. So I'm, I, I'm going to just leave it at that rather than be, say anymore. Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree wholeheartedly with what you just said. I just, I just echo those words to Counselor DePietro. Um, I think we beat this thing up and up. I vote to move the question.
Second. You said vote to move the question.
Oh, I, I recommend to vote to move the question.
It's something, you made a mo, you motioned to move the question.
Yes. Motion.
Are you second? Okay. We're going to move the question. We're going to go to roll call vote.
This is on moving the question.
Uh, yes, this is on.
Move to the question.
Moving the question.
It's on moving the question.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
A yes.
So that was the motion to move the question. We're going to go straight into the question. Again, and number 10, vote to accept the park grant and parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities project program agreement in the amount of 234,492 dollars. We're going to do this by roll call.
Madam Chair. Yes. Correction on the amount.
234,972.
Yeah, you said 492.
Hmm, oh, you say so. I'm pretty sure I said two from here. It might, it might have sounded like four, but I was feeling it. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Steves?
I know I'd be the first one. No.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
No.
Counselor DePietro?
No.
Counselor Manna?
No.
Counselor Morales?
No.
Counselor Nash? Three yes, five no.
Motion does not carry. Okay, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. Okay, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. A vote to ratify the agreement with Graves Engineering for independent peer review services under Mass. General Law, Chapter 53G, in the amount of $2,400 to be funded from account number 215.50.4320.8370. Purchases of services outside consultants, planning, Mass. General Law, Section 44, Section 53G. So, this, I'll just comment that this was at, I was looking for my minutes here, this was at the Planning and Development Meeting, and this is in regard to requiring a developer, this is a private development off Dresser Road, it's an expansion of a solar development, and this is the planning board and the town's right to have peer review in regard to the layout and various things that go on with that project. This is paid for by the developer. It will be paid to the town. The town chooses the engineer to do this service, and the money is paid to them through the town. I think I got all the points on that one. So, that's, and we discussed it, obviously, in depth at Planning and Development with Mr. Comia, our planner. Do you want to say anything on this, Mr. Comia? Sorry. Did that?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Okay. So, we have a first and a second on that. Thank you. Any further discussion on that agenda item? Okay, all those in favor, she hand votes, fine. We've got 8. Motion carries. Oops. Yeah. Agenda item 12, vote to ratify the agreement with Maurice F. Reedy &amp; Company to provide a fee simple appraisal of town-owned industrial land on Commercial Drive in the amount of $1,750 to be funded from account number 3.589.5899.123.9062, preparation for sale of town-owned property.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Sorry about that, the first one, yeah. Again, this was at Planning and Development, and it was basically looking to get a new appraisal for the land lots. There are some people interested potentially in expanding up there or possibly coming in. The last one was done in 2012, I believe, and so we are looking to... Yes? Oh, sorry. We're looking to get the appraisal done again, and our Economic Development Director, Rosemary Scrivens, has been working on this project. Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, and maybe this is to Rosemary. What companies are looking to either expand or move up there?
I'm all the way up here to say that I really can't say because that's confidential when I have people talking about potential investments. I can't really announce that at a public meeting, but I've been working with a couple of different companies that have been looking to expand for almost about a year and a half, and I've been hoping to get to this point to be able to have an appraisal and actually put out an RFP.
Okay. And still, just on that, I mean, are there lots along this way that don't need blasting? Are there, like, I mean, I understand that the appraisal's changed because market values and everything has changed, but is this even viable land for anybody to?
Sure. It's viable. What I'm told is one of the most, blasting is not an uncommon need for land. One of the most expensive elements of developing land is all of the wetlands requirements. I've seen relatively flat land that a manufacturing company might have to spend $2 million to do a site plan and take care of, you know, for instance, if you're a manufacturer and you want to build something like 60,000 square foot of space, then you also need a large parking lot, and it's a site, let's say, that's never been developed before. So, you're taking a lot of pervious surface and turning it into impervious surface, and so you have to make up for all of that by creating a pond nearby. So, development costs are incredibly expensive anyway. So, this land, there is definitely developable land there, and it has, there's plenty of frontage there, there's water and sewer, there's really anything that someone would need.
I ask, because, I mean, I understand the confidentiality, but are these, are these companies that are coming to you aware of the amount that they would feasibly have to put forward in order to?
Well, anyone that...
Build on this land?
Any, before anyone would probably put in a proposal, they would do all of their homework to make sure they understood what they would have to put into it.
I mean, I'm asking this question, and I'm asking our, I guess, the series of questions because we have, as a town, dedicated countless hours to this industrial park that, you know, was built without a feasibility study, was built without any real plan, except for a company that ended up being fake that we were promised was looking to go up there. And that was, you know, right before the industrial, the Commercial Drive was built. And so, I'm just, I feel like unless there is something that's right down the pipeline that is, you know, going to help us as far as the development of that goes, that we shouldn't be spending any more town resources, specifically time, honestly, specifically time. You know, obviously, the $1,700 isn't a large sum of money, but, I mean, I guess I have to trust you because we don't know these companies' names, and we've been burned, as to say, before. So...
So, you know that Midstate Welding purchased a 4-acre lot?
Yep.
And they're growing, and they built a beautiful building there, so they certainly increased the revenues that the town can collect from raw land to a beautiful, I don't know, maybe 40,000 square foot building.
Yeah, they've done a great job.
There is absolutely developable land there. We just haven't been marketing it since then because there's been a lot of complication with what Casella was going to do for us with a road that was perpendicular to Commercial Drive, and we were going to attempt to have another access road that was parallel to Commercial Drive, and then that would have made all those back lots more accessible. So, there's just been a lot of complications, which is why we hadn't gone back out to try to sell this land. But, I mean, this is a bargain price for this appraisal, and like I said, I mean, there's water and sewer there, it's frontage, it is, absolutely has a value. It's, for all the talk of, you know, when people say that we're way off the beaten path, we really aren't, especially right there. That's about 2 or 3 miles off of Route 20, so maybe a total of 10 minutes off the pike. I think that is marketable. The economy hasn't been this good in about 5, 6, you know, since right before the recession, so I have a lot of faith that that $1,750 would be absolutely worth our while.
And do you feel that your time is best spent pursuing this?
Yeah, there's not a lot more time that we would have to put into it. We have, we would hire that professional to do that appraisal than we would put together an RFP. And like I said, I think there would be interest, and I think it's absolutely worth it rather than just let that land sit there. I think there is value there. There's at least 20 acres of developable land.
Okay. Thank you, and I apologize for my excessive questions because I wasn't able to attend that subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
No, that's okay. I think the big thing that we all learned is that we hadn't had an appraisal since '12, which I was around back then when we did the appraisals. And now what they've done is, with the work of the DPW Director and the Assistant Director and others, they've come together and realigned the plotlines and such. I know you've been away, so you haven't probably seen all that material, but, not away, I understand, you were just, no, I get it. I don't mean, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to say, medical leave, yes. Okay, so, there's been a lot of information, and certainly we need to, it's our land, it's got a good road, and we need to have a reason to market it, and the only reason to market it would be if we know how much the value is worth and get something on the tax rolls. So, that was all discussed. Thank you. Okay. Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I just want to thank Ms. Scrivens for going back out and marketing this, and I'm, like, in full support of this, and I'm really happy to hear that there's, you know, potential buyers out there, you know, to bring revenue into our town. So, I don't see why, this, we have the industrial park, and we knew that we had that land up there. There were a lot of issues going on up there. Now, we kind of see the future, and, you know, thank you, Ms. Scrivens, very much. That's all.
I don't know if this should go to Rosemary or to the town manager, but I got 2 quick questions. One is, do you have a timeframe for when this appraisal will be done? And why was, why did you decide to split it the way you, the way you split it as opposed to maybe smaller lots that would be, with other lots, maybe more lots that would be smaller?
This was kind of a joint decision. Well, I'll answer the first question first.
Okay.
I think it was written into that contract that I believe he, Mr. Reedy, said that he would start the appraisal within, is it 4 weeks of signing the contract?
He would start it within 4 weeks? Or he'd finish it within 4 weeks?
I don't have the contract in front of me, so I don't have the benefit of that, but it does state.
Finish it in 4 weeks.
Finish it in 4 weeks. It'll start as soon as it's assigned.
Once it was assigned. Yeah.
Okay.
And to answer the second question, so it was a joint effort between the Town Assessor and the DPW Director and the Assistant DPW Director and me when we looked at the topography there and where the, first of all, we wanted to make it, there to be some flexibility so that if somebody wanted to join a couple of the lots that have frontage, they could. If they didn't want to, you know, obviously, they don't need to. It's difficult, I think what the DPW Director did several years ago was he laid out a number of 1-acre lots, and the appraiser, the assessor, and the DPW Director just felt that this was a better approach.
Okay. Just curious, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else with questions on this one? Okay, all those in favor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Marketti, come on up.
Mike Marketti, 120 Maria Avenue. I sit on the Subcommittee, and I asked the same question that Counselor O'Clair asked. I didn't ask for specific names of the company, I just wanted to make, I wanted to know what types of companies are looking to locate up there, because I want to make sure it's the type of company that this community wants up there.
And, well, to that point, we have to approve.
And maybe Rosemary could answer that.
Right. I was going to say, council has to approve, first off, an RFP would go out with all the parameters, we discussed that, I believe, that night, but secondly, land gets approved for sale, town land does get approved through council for sale, so, go ahead, yes?
So, Mike, in RFP process, the state procurement process, you open up through a request for proposals. Any kind of business can apply to purchase the land up there, no matter what it is, it doesn't matter if we like it or don't like it. Part of the evaluation process in RFP, we set up standards for things that we're looking at, and we can disqualify any purchaser based upon what they're trying to build up there or the price or any, that's why you do a request for proposals instead of an invitation to bid. A request for proposal, that you evaluate every proposed offer, evaluate it based on some set of criteria, and you can refuse, or, you know, we can sort of choose what we think is best for that area. As to who it would be, it really doesn't matter, truthfully, what Rosemary's list is because the whole point of procurement is to have an open process to make this land available to any citizen who wants to buy it, and then you have to evaluate those proposals fairly.
I'm not asking who, I'm asking what type of businesses are looking to come in up there.
Again...
You did not know, you said you did not know. Tonight, Rosemary said she's had several companies approach her. I'm not asking Rosemary the names.
So, you're looking for if it's a manufacturer, if it's a, we'll cut that general type? Is that what you're asking, Mike?
That's correct.
So, one of them, actually, a couple of them are manufacturers. That's ideally, I mean, it's zoned industrial. That's usually, that's the type of company that makes the biggest investment. They usually create the greatest number of jobs. So, you know, again, that's what we'll be, I think, laying out in the RFP, what are highly advantageous, what a highly advantageous proposal would be, would be a manufacturer and a little more on the lighter side of industrial as opposed to heavy.
Thank you, Rosemary. Counselor O'Clair.
Okay, sorry, really quick last question. If, there's been undeveloped land, and this might be to the town manager, so if there's undeveloped land that's zoned for industrial use, is there a special permit process for a new development on the land? Or...
I'm going to give that to the town planner, who would be the appropriate person to answer that kind of question.
I'm just, I'm curious. Because of the zoning, if the zoning is already, they explained it, the zoning bylaw, meaning, you know, depending on how you're already zoned, you can't prohibit if it's already zoned for certain things. But, go ahead.
Correct. Yeah, in our zoning bylaw, if there was a use on our use table that said yes under industrial, it could be permitted and would just go through a building permit process.
Just the regular one?
Just the, yeah, just the regular one.
I was curious because, you know, abandoned properties and stuff that are over 2 years old have to go through the whole, but new development doesn't.
Right.
Thank you.
Good questions. Counselor Steves?
That makes me think of something. Would it be possible to make sure that we can, that you bring the RFP to Subcommittee so that we can throw around some ideas of what we would like to see and not see up there? So, we can, so we can, I mean, I don't expect to see the specific proposals, obviously, if they're confidential, but, so we can have, so all of us can have some idea, and the public can have some input of what they, what we might like up there.
We could do that, and, I mean, we could do that for all of them, it just slows down the process, but it is something, I mean, it wouldn't, if you're going to look at it, I would propose that that be done just at Subcommittee, and then it doesn't come up the full council. If you guys want to have some input in that, really, I think, you know, that, what you're asking for is a criteria that we establish, you know, and obviously, up in the industrial park, we're going to favor manufacturing because that's the whole concept of it. So, I mean, we could, it'll slow down the process somewhat, it's not, you know, the, and RFPs are pretty standard documents. Once you see one, truthfully, other than some scope of service work, they're pretty much alike. I would say that there's not going to be a heck of a lot unique here, other than that, you know, we are going to want a manufacturer, obviously, you don't want retail up there, you don't want something that's not going to be good. We're not looking to put a, another landfill or some big negative event. And truthfully, where you're going to have the big decision is actually in approving the sale land. If you don't like something there, that's where you're going to be able to say, "No, we just don't want it." But, if there was anything remotely that was controversial, I would bring it to you anyway to look at it, you know?
Might I suggest that the previous RFP that went out, you know, when the lots were the way they were prior, maybe that would be something that council could look over. I'm sure we could pull them out and just have them in the office, and if somebody wanted to see what we've done in the past or what the council's done in the past, it's going to be helpful to understand what that process looks like.
And that's fine. And Gus, you're going to see shortly, because it's finished, I just want to wait till we get back from, I get back from vacation, but you're going to see the request for a proposal for the 70 Foster Street property, and truthfully, the standard language, other than scope of sales. Now, there, we're selling land instead of, you know, but you'll see exactly what the scope of service will look and what the criteria might look like. Now, it's going to be a little different because we're talking about developing manufacturing versus existing, but it's going to be almost identical in terms of the actual RFP, okay? And you're going to see that, I mean, I'm asking you to hold that meeting until I get back so we can talk about it, but it is done.
No, I get that, thank you. What I was curious about, how much, how much authority can we throw into the RFP itself to the kind of specifics of things we can and can't, that we do and do not want? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, you can go ahead. But I...
So, the answer is, other than the scope of services, almost nothing, because it's all standard contract language under state procurement law. Really, the difference from one RFP to another is mostly the scope of services and the criteria you're judging it on, and usually, what we would do is we would set up a committee, myself, Rosemary, Will, and we would evaluate that, those proposals before we brought them to you. And then we would be making a recommendation to you what we thought was the best, and it's up to you if you want to accept it or not.
Okay. Are we good with that? Good questions. All those in favor? 8 unanimous? Agenda item number 13, vote to approve the activities proposed as part of the town's FY 2018 application under the CDBG program based on the town receiving a total award of $825,000.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So, that would have come under Planning and Development. There was a hearing that happened. I don't know if anybody wants to talk on that. This year's CDBG proposed activities, the Central Street Parking Lot Phase 2 improvements are taking up most of it in the amount of $606,000. That's landscape improvements, engineering contingencies, lots of stuff. That is to get the second part. We haven't started the first part officially, but this is for the next grant period. So, we've allocated the money to start that whole readaption of the Central Street Parking Lot and make the downtown a more aesthetically and functional, business-friendly area. So, this will be number 2. This will be for FY 2018, should the grants all come through. And then, part-time code enforcer, $26,000. That is to continue the code enforcer that hopefully we're hiring soon or have hired?
Well, we can't hire him until we...
No, this, no, we haven't...
The new one isn't hired yet, right, Rosemary?
The one that we already got.
We haven't interviewed, so it's...
We already got the grant for the first.
Yeah. So, the answer is we have not hired him yet because we haven't interviewed him. him.
And that's a bit behind.
Yep.
And then commercial rehab of $44,114. That's different types of projects throughout the community, a lot of different grants, awning grants, facade grants and such. And the administration costs are built into for a total of $825.00. Thank you, Rosemary.
I'm sure I'm clear with you. Just one more comment I have to pick it out as you're talking. So the interviews are already scheduled for that position, so we'll be interviewing shortly for that. I don't know if it's, if it's this week before I go on vacation or when we come back. Is it tomorrow?
We have three interviews tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow, okay. I might count it. I just didn't remember when.
So I asked that question because we, that came in the grant that we've already received in the fall, last fall. So that money's put aside. I'm ready for a code enforcer to help in the inspections and all. And this is to the next year to hopefully be a two-year program.
Correct.
Or more. No cost to the town, all paid for by grant money.
Correct.
Okay.
100%. All right. Counselor, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair, to you. Again, I didn't make this meeting as well. I was unable to attend. I just have a question. Landscape improvements of like a half a million dollars, that seems like quite expensive. Was there any money available, I mean, to decrease this and put some money into downtown? So when people do go to Central Street from downtown or something, that they're not like going like this, you know? I mean, because, I mean, is there any money that can be put into that? I mean, half a million dollars is a lot for landscape improvements.
Right. And it's not just like some trees and plants. It's a lot more. So Rose, do you want it or Rose, one of you can?
Yeah, we have, I mean, it's landscaping, hardscape.
Lighting fixtures and all that. Everything else. Everything underground is this year. Everything above ground is next year.
So there's no money that can be, like, taken from this and appropriated for?
You wouldn't want to take a little bit of money to fix those bumps on Main Street.
I'd like to take, I'd like to take this half a million dollars, to be honest with you, and to fix those bumps.
Yeah. Yeah. But we had a public hearing for the, for the grant, and this is what was.
I know. And like I said, I wasn't able to attend or anything. And I do apologize. Personal matters do come up. Life happens. So I was not able to attend. And so that was my question.
And it's something that we could, talking about Main Street, it's something that we could address with the FY 19 grant.
That, I think that would be a really good thing to do.
That was actually a discussion at the, at the public hearing. Somebody brought that up, that Main Street needed some more, some roadwork.
Well, just looking at this paper and see landscape improvements for a half a million dollars. I mean, I thought my question was rather good, so that's all. Thanks.
Yours and others who probably would say the same thing. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I thought I had something. Maybe I don't. I guess I was just going to say that, you know, every year, we talk about the CDBG grant money over the course of several meetings. And, you know, if any counselor has any apprehensions about, you know, landscaping or need any kind of additional things, you can always reach out or throughout the various different avenues of speaking of this project, you know, explain them then. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. It's absolutely true. And this is a long-term project that's been discussed numerous times for that Central Street area.
Over several years, yeah.
Yeah. So, so this is the culmination, the final, we had to sort of put it up or move on. So this is, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions to Rose or anyone? Counselor Carrasco.
Yes, I just, I don't have a comment to Rosemary or her team. I just, I just, again, we're, we're talking about grants. And some of the timing of these grants are very difficult because it's when the state releases them and all that jazz, when they approve these plans. What I have, I do have a problem with this, this grant. And is, because I feel that $70,000 of this grant is, if we want to use the term that was used earlier this evening, as a Band-Aid. I think continuing to pay for someone, a code enforcer, again, this is taking money, hiring someone to do the job of individuals that should be doing the job. I understand that they're taxed and there, there's a lot going on. And I know for several years, things have happened. But to hire someone and take monies that is a grant and put it into a position which ends up being part of our budget, well, not right now, but in years later, we're going to have to come up with this money to continue to sustain this person. If not, we're going to say, thank you for your two years of service or a year and a half of service. And then the other $44,000 of commercial rehab. And when I look at this commercial rehab program, I've always had a problem with it. We, we are giving businesses money for their, for the look. If we look at the facade and the signs, it's all great. We're, we're investing in our, on Main Street, but those are not our buildings. Again, we're giving free money away. And again, it's, it's difficult for me to approve giving free money away when we just rejected money. It just doesn't make sense because $44,000 for a sign for an awning, when you look at that 310 Main Street, that building no longer exists. It's gone. The fire took it. So all that money that we invested into that is gone. And I, and I know it's, it's, it's part of a loan forgiveness program and I know how it, oh, at the end of the day, we're still providing someone else's building a good look. And I don't think it's the town responsibility for that to happen because none of those buildings we own. I just, that's just my personal opinion. If somebody wants to explain it, that's fine. I just, I won't be supporting this part of this grant. I, I agree that the Central Street parking lot needs to be done because of the plans and the things, but we're just doing Band-Aid for long-term problems.
I'd like to respond to your statement about 310 Main Street. When we had the, when the fire occurred, the owners who now reside in Florida had to pay back. We got $31,000 to put into the towns, back into the grant. So we did collect some of that money.
And some of the leftover money, was that some of the money that we put towards the, the side, the ramp, remember how there was some extra money in CDBG?
Yeah, not that particular money, but.
Right. But same idea. When there's extra leftover or something, we use it.
If it's, if it's.
Like contingencies leftover money.
If it's from a grant that was over five years old.
Yeah.
Then we can give it to the town as miscellaneous income.
That's good to know, though. I didn't realize.
I didn't realize either that we got that money back. Thank you.
We did.
That's good.
It wasn't easy. We had to fight to get that money back and threaten court action and everything else. But we did get the money, so it was a really positive thing.
I also just wanted to respond when you were talking about the commercial rehab. So the way that's, there are a finite number of activities that DHCD dictates to us that we can spend their money on. And commercial rehab, signs, awnings and facade are one of the more effective ones for downtown. And each community can kind of set up the parameters of how they're, they're going to handle that money when they get it. And so the way our program is set up is the business owner or the commercial building owner, they have to have skin in the game. They have four facades. They have to put money in as at 20, 25% of the value because we feel, as you do and most people would, that you're, you know, you, if, if you don't have enough money to do something like that, you probably shouldn't be in business. And we, we don't love giving away free money if we don't think there's some value that's going to come back to the town. And I think if you look around at the, some of the most beautiful facades and signs in downtown, they were done, they were paid for through this program. And it really, really does have an impact. You hear stories of how, you know, if, if this person, if this building looks nice, then the building next to it, you know, that, that person's more apt to invest. So we think it's a good program. So that's just all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. And just, only because I've already brought up the whole issue of utilizing one-time money for ongoing expenses. As I am aware, I've been made aware, the code enforcement officer is going to be a position that works alongside Andy and Casey, correct? So it's, it's almost as if you're giving them an assistant that's going to go through, you know, the projects that they can't get to during their normal, you know, work week. And that will hopefully generate revenue for the town through different inspections and things that they can't get to. It is a position that is a short-term position, correct?
No grant, no position.
So there is no, if we do not get the money next year in order to fund this position, then the position is just eliminated.
And, and, yeah, that's something else that I just, I just wanted to clarify that. So again, this is a really, this is, using money in this way is very common in the state. I know of a few communities that have been funding one full-time for many, many years. It's a proactive type of enforcement process. And so many communities just do not have the capacity to do it because your, your day-to-day building inspectors are usually just so busy with the things that are coming at them, you know, new development, and they're inspecting for that. So this ends up falling by the wayside. And it's, it's really a preventative measure, a proactive measure to kind of stop the bleeding so that, you know, yes, we, we spent a lot of money on demolishing that huge building on the corner of Mill and Main. And there's certainly a number of other buildings that are very blighted and they're on their way to being demolished. So having this, this proactive code enforcer is a way to try to prevent buildings from getting to that point. And the, the law says that we can do it. If the property owner does not allow it, they can be fined. They, they have to pay for the appraisal, I'm sorry, for the visit, for the code enforcement visit. If, if they're not up to code, again, they can be fined. So it can actually be, I hate to call it a moneymaker, but it is a way of bringing in some revenue. And even if they get out to a small percentage of those buildings, the word starts to get around that we're being proactive and hopefully that changes the attitude and behavior of some of the other building owners.
Thank you, Rosemary. I just want to point out too, that it's an advocacy for, actually, tenants too. I mean, because when, we're not doing our inspections. We haven't had the ability to do all those inspections because we have so many multifamilies in our community. And that if we can put somebody in there, like you said, if they know we're now going to be enforcing, that makes landlords and tenants behave a little better. But also, it just helps tenants who are having issues with their landlords, who are not being up to code in their apartments and stuff. So it, it helps on a multi-level purpose. I mean, if we had to hire them, I'd be, you know, I'd have second thoughts. But coming from the money, I don't have so many thoughts. Counselor Carrasco.
So just to clear some thoughts here, what's the long-term projection? Because I know you, you just stated that we've used, other communities have used, you know, this, these monies to hire full-time. My fear is past practice in this community where we've created a position with grant monies and then we have no longer been able to sustain the grant and now they've just creeped over into our operating budget. So my only concern is, you know, I understand that a lot of this money this year is going towards Central Street project. And I know next year, we're probably even going to talk about Main Street, which is something that we should look at. Because that's, I'd rather forget the signs, let's fix that, you know, for the next four or five years. But Mike, Mike, this is probably to the town manager and you, because this is your department that you guys are working together to collaborate. Because I just, again, past practice has been, let's create the position. We get this grant all the time. We're, we're, this is the type of community we are, because this is what I've heard. You know, this grant, block grant, we get it because of the stats and our, who we are as a community. I just, I'm fearful to be able to just say, okay, yeah, let's create another position. And this is how town government just continues to add to their operating budget.
I understand.
And we're not in that place.
But the community, the town council could decide at any time that that's not what you wanted to continue to do. And the person would be well aware that they were being funded through a grant. And this happens a lot in communities. But I think, you know, when you think about, right now, it's part-time and maybe it would never be more than that. We can all decide together. But $26,000 out of $825,000 is really short, which is the amount of, that we're, we think we're going to get in our grant, is really pretty short money for, for the impact, relatively speaking, that that could have, I believe.
No, and I, I would agree that we would generate revenue. We would do, you know, we would help a lot of our citizens and stuff. My only fear is the past practice of government getting bigger due to the fact of grants.
And I agree that we have gotten fat in the employee side of it. I've said that myself too. And I think it's up to future counselors not to let that become a permanent position. I mean, the councils, that's, will be up to them to mine the store on that or to say, we don't want $26,000 going to that grant. It's got to go to more facades or streets or whatever. But I think to play catch-up, I think the way it's been presented in the subcommittees has been about that we are quite far behind from, from all kinds of enforcement. And therefore, if we can at least get a handle on it, so it doesn't get worse, so, so we don't keep getting deteriorated buildings where people move out and we, we get left with them because the banks don't, nobody wants them. And that's kind of what it's about too, the blight control. It's called blight control.
My only, my, before.
I know. Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Before, before I give up, my only question is, I understand that a lot of our issues also come from absentee landlords and how, you know, I, I know that many communities, and we can't pinpoint and say, okay, this guy's going to really tackle this, or a girl is going to tackle this. We, we understand this. But Mike, what is the plan for these absentee landlords? Because, you know, this winter, thank God that we've had, had a lot of snow. But regardless, the snow and ice, we've been ticketing individuals non-stop, but that doesn't, it, we can ticket, 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 but it doesn't deal with the issue, the safety issue. And a lot of these blighted buildings, we end up taking down because of safety. A lot of the fines, I mean, kids can't cross, can't walk on the sidewalk because of safety, safety issue. So Mike, you know, in, in regards to the job description that this person's going to have, can we implement something to building a relationship or do, I don't know. Because we have to think of outside the box in regards to these absentee landlords, you know, because we can hire this guy, he can, we can give him more than Charlie Baker's salary. We can give him more than, you know, a professional athlete's salary. It's not going to matter. He can ticket until he's blue in the face. And if these absentee landlords don't take responsibility, how, you know, so I, I'm, I'm understanding what's happening here and I like the idea and I think we need to. But at the same time, we have to be creative and I don't know how to do that, but to tackle these absentee landlords because he's going to give tickets to these people 15 times a week, you know, for every violation.
So it's a great subject matter for inspections under, under PPP, I believe. It'd make a great conversation to see what the oversight is going to be, what we're going to enforce, how we can do it. And I think that would be something that we should put on subcommittee to continue the conversation. But in the meantime, the town manager wants to talk about the position, I think. And then Rose can fill in.
This is really important. I want people to clearly understand. The inspections Department right now has more people in court than I think we've ever had in court because of these issues. We're using every legal means possible to go after these, like, slum landlords, people who just don't respect the property. We also are, you know, putting more liens on property, trying to put pressure on them. We added the blight law for that purpose to give us a little bit more leverage to do just that. It is true, there's a significant backlog in terms of, you know, doing code enforcement because we had a part-time billing inspector for years and we really didn't have the staff to do this. So this is going to help the inspectional department get more up to speed. There's no long-term intention to have a permanent full-time employee here, so that's not our intention. Frankly, any hire we do is based upon need. We wouldn't even bring something to you unless we could prove a real need for any position in town, not just this one. So, you know, right now, we want to have this person go out, help Casey get the town up, you know, up to speed, all these, these multifamilies that haven't been inspected for years. My biggest issue, quite frankly, is a public safety issue. There's some of these porches and stuff that people are walking up that, that are very dangerous and not up to code. We need to protect, as, as the chair said, we need to protect the citizens who live in these houses because they're, they're actually dangerous. So we, we regularly now are going to court and doing that. But as you know, that process alone is expensive. And Andy's spending more and more time at court than he is in the office trying to enforce us. It is sad and we do need to talk about later. And we tried to talk this about when we did the blight bylaw, that some of these landlords are using 401(c)(3) companies and hiding behind those companies and they, they let the properties rot and then they walk away from the property. We want to do something about that, but frankly, there's nothing we can do legally against that. So we are exercising every means, Counselor Carrasco, to go after these people. We're going to, I don't want to say harass them, give them the, you know, as much punishment as we as we can for what they're doing to residents. Eventually, this position, I hope, goes away, we're up to speed, we put more pressure on these people, unless people, unless we send a message that we're going to do this to these landlords, they're going to keep doing it. So we're trying to send a very strong message that if you let this property get on the tubes, if you risk injury to the people who are renting from you, we are going to punish you, and I wish the law was stronger on our side. So we can only do what we can do legally, but that is the big purpose of this. Eventually, I hope this position goes away, and we don't need it, and things are up to speed, and people are more responsible, but it has to be done. We can't ignore this problem. It's gone on too long, too many properties have deteriorated, and as you and I both know, it costs us a fortune in ripping down these buildings. I mean, it's just outrageous to get to that point. We should have been doing this truthfully years ago, that this should have been occurring. So this is the time we're acting, I wished that somebody did this years ago, we wouldn't be facing this. But hopefully in the future, this will result in you guys investing less money in ripping down buildings. That's the hope. And this is a lot more efficient in terms of tax dollars than the other way.
You're good?
No, I'm good.
All right, I'm going to go to this side before I come back to this side. So, one of you guys over here, everybody? No? Counselor, we'll go to Counselor Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wondering what Mr. Pelletier's position is regarding this position, and would this individual be working under his, under his discretion, or?
You asked what Mr. Pelletier's position is about this, is that what you asked?
Well, would this person be reporting to Mr. Pelletier?
Oh, yes.
Would he be working directly under him?
Yes. So he worked with our department to do this, to put this in our application. In fact, it was probably the first six months that I was here, he and I spoke about how strongly we felt that doing things like this is how you help turn a community around. So he, we really partnered with him on doing this.
If I could follow on that, Madam Chair? I'm wondering, $26,000 doesn't really buy you a full-time anything.
No, it's part-time.
So I'm wondering, has any consideration been put into allowing Mr. Pelletier to grab folks from surrounding towns? I won't put out a list, but people that are, obviously works with, and they go back and forth and help each other when an inspector's sick or so forth, to give them temporary hours and reimburse them, rather than actually creating one position for one person? $26,000, I'm just saying, doesn't buy you a guy or gal in that position for any amount of time at all.
Well, it's supposed to be a, I'm sorry, a part-time position for probably about, well, it's probably going to be a little less than 12 months now, because this grant will probably be expiring if we don't extend it by December of this year. But, I mean, this was fully discussed, you know, what that would buy, what the hourly rate would be. Andy and Casey both felt that that was a fair figure to get someone. We, this person, the whole point behind this is to have someone completely focused on doing these proactive inspections.
Certainly, certainly.
So we want to make the most of them in an intense period of time. So sharing with another community wouldn't work because we want this person to be focused on this for their 26 hours, right in Southbridge.
Okay. Are you all set? I know, I know you're getting it with the sharing, sharing a code enforcer, but you did have to do some research on that. So it's for a different...
Because a code enforcement officer obviously would have to have credentials as much, if not more, than Mr. Pelletier or any building inspector.
No, no, they, and you know what, I can't answer all these questions if you have, you know, maybe Andy could, but I know that that's not the case. I think they'll be working under his or Casey's certification as a building inspector, and they would be expected to do some training, get some training within the first few months.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Steves?
Thanks. Rose, may I add two quick questions, and these might have come up in subcommittee, I just don't remember them. Do you have a rough idea of how, what percentage of houses that we're actually inspecting now? And do you know whether these, is there a potential of having the inspection fees eventually pay for this, pay for this job in the long term?
I do not know, I don't think we're doing any of these proactive inspections. Is my understanding, is that your understanding?
Yeah, okay.
And I just want you to know that this is common in other communities. And then the other question, tell me again?
Was, do you think that would be possible to get it so that the inspection fees actually end up paying for the, paying for the position?
Go ahead, do you? Yeah, I think we, Andy's hoping that that's what it will lead to.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
And we are required to be doing these inspections every five years.
I know.
And we haven't been doing any of them, so I think it's very important.
And actually, the multifamily units are once a year.
Yeah, okay.
Or, wait a minute, is it every five, oh, I'm sorry, places of assembly is annual.
Yep.
All right. Counselor Manna, would you go, and Counselor Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I just, you know, I want to thank the town manager for bringing this up in regards to the absentee landlords and supporting this. How many times I've brought it up, when I walked out in communities, I brought it up before. I've walked up steps, the steps have fallen apart. I stood on porches, and I've seen the porches, the railings, coming out of the building. I've reported them and stuff. I mean, this is, I think, should be a full-time position, personally, but I'm glad to see the money set aside for this, because our community has been neglected way too long. And if we're behind, like you're saying we're behind, well, then shame on us, you know, shame on us. That's all. Thanks.
Counselor Carrasco, do you have anything else?
I think I'm actually all set. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. No questions, because this has been quite an extensive discussion, as it was in subcommittee, and I just want to extend a thanks to the two of you ladies for the public hearing. We were more than satisfied there as well, and thank you for staying after nine o'clock on a Monday night, doing diligence on CDBG matters for us. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, I think we'll do roll call on this. I like the idea of solidifying.
Counselor O'Clare?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
A yes.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to the next item, let me use yours. So, next item, item number 14, is a proposed amendment to the Southbridge zoning bylaw introducing a new definition in Article III, definition, section 300.471, commercial recreation marijuana establishment, add Article IV, section 401.5, marijuana, add Article IV, section 401.5A, marijuana establishments, add Article V, section 402.76, marijuana establishment, and Article V, section 502.139.2, commercial recreational marijuana establishment, and prohibit in each zoning district, new language as follows. So this is new proposed zoning bylaw language, it's a first reading, and I believe you all received an email with the updated agenda. There was a little bit of language clarification by Mysticumia, so before I read the actual bylaw, zoning bylaw that's going to change. This is in conjunction with the zoning, with the marijuana bylaw that we just put into our normal bylaws, based on the vote. Should anything ever change in the future, things can change along with it, but basically we are just trying to make our bylaws and zoning bylaws and all cohesive and under, you know, and that's what we're going with this. So, having said that, we'll get to the reading. Section 300.471, commercial recreational marijuana establishment, a marijuana cultivator, independent testing laboratory, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business for the recreational market. The amend, amend section 401, regulations applying to all districts to add section 401.5 marijuana and section 401.5A marijuana establishments in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 3A2, all types of marijuana establishments as defined in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1, and as many as may otherwise be defined by Massachusetts law or regulation to include, without limitation, all marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana retailers, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business shall be prohibited within the town of Southbridge. This prohibition shall not be construed to affect the medical use of marijuana as expressly authorized by the provisions of Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012 and 105 CMR 725.000, as the same may be amended from time to time, or the ability for households to grow for personal use as defined under Mass. General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 2. Also amend section 502, table of use regulations, to add quote, "commercial recreational marijuana establishment," end quote, and prohibit in each zoning district under section 502.76 and 502.139.2, respectively. The table of use regulations will then read, 502.76, commercial recreational marijuana establishment, and it would be no in all districts, single-family, two-family, multifamily, retail business, general business, light industry, heavy industry, business opportunity district, and central core. Got more. And 502.13, manufactured, processing, and related uses. Again, that would be 502.139.2, commercial recreational marijuana establishment, and again, it would be no listed in all the various districts. And that would be a first reading. Basically, I'm reading to you a chart, which is what our zoning, looks, what our zoning bylaw looks like, the graph for the, for the districts. So, any discussion on the first reading? Okay. Then we will go forward with the second and the third reading. This was brought up in general government, discussed, and it was voted to recommend that council proceed with the three readings and ratification of this change. Okay. All right, then, Counselors Forum. Counselor O'Clare, would you like to go first tonight?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. First, just want to say, or I guess reiterate, because I already kind of touched on this earlier. Thank you to everyone who stepped up, you know, in the past month that I was absent, just for the public. I had an unexpected medical emergency that left me, you know, unable to do council work for about a month's time. I also, I will not be able to attend the executive session tonight. Oh, the only other thing that I wanted to talk about is the, papers are currently available in Town Hall for those who are thinking about running for Town Council. There are currently going to be four seats that are coming up in this June. You know, I think that as far as the direction of the council goes, we need a vast overhaul. I would call on progressively-minded individuals who haven't lost faith in the economic development of this town, put their name forward, put it in the hat, give me a call, I'll help you walk through everything, answer any questions that you might have. My phone number, I'll put it out there, 774-230-1996. We need more people up here that are more concerned with the future and the economic development of this town than personal agendas. Thank you. Bye.
All set?
All set.
Counselor Carrasco?
Have a good night.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Morales?
I'm all set, thank you.
Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I don't know if it's working, but I think aloud anyhow. I do have a couple of things tonight. First of all, I wanted to commend the consultant, along with Rosemarie and the team, and those members of boards, committees, and commissions that participated in the all-boards meeting last Thursday night, I think it was. I know I was there from the get-go, and Counselor Steves and Counselor Clements did arrive after a little while, they had a conflict, and I respected that. There was some very good input that was shared from everyone that participated, but one thing that really rang true with me, and I did have follow-up correspondence with one or two citizens about, was council's role in the zoning bylaw update. Absolutely couldn't agree more. Council needs to take a leadership role and start driving that ship a little bit harder. So I hope we can put our heads together and come up with some ideas to help do that. You know, there's a lot more to that than I'm willing to say here tonight, except that we definitely need to show ourselves as leaders, as the elected representatives of the Southbridge public. We need to act like it, and we need to take this very seriously. One of the strongest tools that we have is to leverage bylaws. Thank you. I'll go on to add that I'm really pleased to have had a great conversation with Dick Whitney today, over at the Optical Heritage Museum. Just a reminder to folks that that is there, it's a great resource here in town. I'm going to have my first visit after nine years now, in the very near future. I'll be happy to tell you all about it, but Mr. Whitney does have hours posted on the website, which is opticalheritagemuseum.com. If anybody wants to go Thursday afternoon, sometime between two and four is what I'm planning. Very interested in learning a little bit more and seeing firsthand how our community developed with the AO and within that optical industry. I'm sorry, I had one more thing here. Budget season is upon us. Takes a lot of time, a lot of energy, and I certainly hope that this council will do as I've seen in the past, my first time as a councillor, going through budget season, although I've been part of plenty. It takes a lot of energy to look at all these darn pieces of paper and go through line by line. Let's do our diligence and really put a good budget forth this year. I know that the town manager has asked for certain levels to be met by his department heads, but as others have said, it could be a little bit of a interesting season for us here with forthcoming budgets. Let's do our diligence and do our best. I know the school's going to be complicated, but there's a lot of work ahead of us here. Please do your best to participate. Thank you.
All set?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm going to go back to Counselor Carrasco for a moment.
Yes, I just, just want to thank, I know this is fresh information that we just received in regards to the departure of an individual in our school department that I believe was a very positive asset to our community, and that is Dr. Townsend. He has accepted a role as an assistant superintendent in Michigan. He's going back home, and I just want to publicly thank him for being a team player, being an all-in individual from the very moment that he came to Southbridge. He's done some great work, and I'm pretty sure that his team will continue that great work, but I just wanted to take this moment to just recognize that he was a great asset to our community, and Michigan will be blessed with him.
Thank you for letting us know. Okay, Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I just want to thank the Southbridge Police Department. A couple days ago, they did a pretty big drug bust, and it got some drugs off the street, kept them off the street, I should say, and also some guns, too. So kudos to them. They do a really, really good job in protecting our community, and I just want to tell, say this, you know, if you see something, say something, call the police department, you can remain anonymous or not, it's up to you, but this is our community, and we need to keep it safe, and that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor DePietro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Counselors Forum has become a little bit of a soapbox for the upcoming election, I will throw my two cents in, and I would hope that on top of, yes, future planning for the town, things like the item that did not pass, and I am quite disappointed that we don't have the money to afford it, but you eat your vegetables before you get your dessert, and we're not there yet. And I hope that would be taken into consideration for folks that are going to support future candidates. And that's, since I've walked in and had the opportunity to sit in this seat, I've watched things get bleaker and bleaker financially, and they're only going to continue to do so. And we have to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Steves? Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Steves?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, just a couple of points. First off, uh, for those of you who are into drama, Gateway is doing their Sex Please Were 60 this weekend. They started it last weekend. Um, they're finishing the couple of runs this weekend at Elm Street Church, so you might wanna check that out. Um, also, um, I, I, as the chairman mentioned a little while ago, um, I was at, I was also part of the discussion involving the new, the new, um, receiver. And, um, I thought he was very, very well-spoken. Um, he seems to know a lot of, uh, he seems to have a lot of experience in similar circumstances to ours. Um, I'm still, I'm gonna be a little, I'll have to honestly say, I'm gonna be a little bit skeptical until I can see some of the stuff that actually take place, because we've heard a lot of the same things from superintendents for the last 10 years. And I wanna see that really get fixed. So, hopefully, he will stay around. He seems to be interested in staying around, so I hope he does. Um, also, I wanted to say thanks to Joanne Batista, um, in the collector's office, for her decades of service. She's going to be retiring in the near future. And, uh, other people who have been around town obviously know her quite well. So, good luck with your retirement there, Joanne. Um, and lastly, um, this is not quite really generally a town council thing per se, but I just wanted to point out that I think, uh, that looking at all the stuff that's going on in the international realm right now, um, I would really like to see if there's people in the community who would help, be willing to help me start regenerating the peace movement, because we really need to get people together to help, um, stand up and say, we're tired of all of these stupid wars in the Middle East, and possibly in North Korea and other places that we probably can't even count them at this point. So, if there's anybody interested, give me a call at 508-764-8042, and see if we can get something going. Anyway, that's it. Thank you. Um, and, uh, our next meeting is Monday, February 26th, at seven here in the chambers.
Okay. So, we, uh, do have an executive session listed on here. And I am going to read the, the correct MGL that's come to disclosure here today. Uh, it's a, not quite right there, and I wanna make sure we're going in for the correct reasons. Uh, we're in a, I'm looking for a motion on a vote to enter into executive session according to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22A7, and that's to review and discuss executive session minutes of, uh, 2010 through October of 2017. And I do declare that that, uh, could be detrimental in open session at this point. So, uh, we will not come out, we will adjourn from executive session tonight. So, I get a motion?
Second.
Okay.
Just before we do that motion, I just wanna be excused on the February 26th meeting. I will not be here.
Okay. We, we'll talk about it inside.
I do have one quick question.
Yeah?
Would we, knowing, knowing some of what's there, I can't, we're discussing it at the moment, but wouldn't we want to be voting some of them out?
We'll discuss in executive session. I'll tell you why.
Okay, okay.
And, and if that were to be the case, we could add it to the next agenda. It's just a simple line.
Okay.
All right. But for tonight, we will not come out. We will adjourn from executive session. Okay? You're not gonna make it, right?
Right, I was just gonna say that. I was gonna abstain. That's all.
Right. So, we need a, a vote, we need a roll call vote on that.
To go into executive?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Abstain.
Seven yes, one abstain.
Okay, then that's what we're going to do. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. And don't forget school committee tomorrow night.